Welcome, this is the Hawkins County Board of Education, August the 9th of 2018. About 6:05. Thank you for being here and welcome. It's good to see a good crowd tonight. With that said, I will ask everyone to stand for a moment of silence and begin the meeting.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Phil Skanus, please read our conflict of interest statements, please. Yes, Mr. Chairman, those of you that acknowledge you have a personal and/or a indirect conflict of interest, do you acknowledge each conflict of interest for all actions and purposes of this meeting? And do you further acknowledge that all your votes will be in the best interest of the school system?
I do.
As the record reflect that I'll have on both conflicts. Item number five on our agenda is approval of minutes of the July 12th board meeting. Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Ms. Shedd, second.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Charles. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign. Thank you, the motion carries. Under recognitions, I'll go to Dr. Bailey, please.
We'd like Micah Coward to come to the front, please, and her friends, she brought some friends with her, Alyssa Coleman, Mallory Keener, and Jasmine Bowles, and us in it right there. I first read about Micah five years ago when she was in second grade. And you may know or have heard of Micah's lemonade stand from, she started her lemonade stand in the Churchill area. And when she was in second grade, she sold lemonade through the summer to make money for children whose parents couldn't pay for their meals. She wanted to make sure they had hot meal. The first year that she raised money was for one school when she made $46 during her summer vacation that year. For the last five years, she's continued to have her lemonade stand and she donates all the money to the schools. Last year, she donated to five schools. She donated to Mount Carmel Elementary, Churchill Elementary, Churchill Intermediate, Churchill Middle, and Segwaysville Elementary School. And she raised $1,500. For this coming year, she's been working this coming year. I met her at the Mount Carmel block party, first time I got to meet her. Impressive young lady. So far, she's raised $2,100. And she is going to sponsor seven schools this school year. And she's still working to raise more money, I understand. So her parents are here with her, they brought her, and I just wanted the board to meet her because she's been working five years. Gabriel Warlock, could you come to the front, please? Gabriel has some special orders. I'm gonna ask his teacher, Kristy Thacker, to come. Kristy has worked with Gabriel this summer. And Kristy is going to tell the audience about Gabriel's accomplishments.
Gabriel's been involved in Special Olympics since third grade. His past year, he was chosen to compete in the state summer Special Olympics. While he was there, he won, in his events, he won silver and gold medals. So in doing so, he was placed into the draw for the USA Games, which is a great accomplishment. We never dreamed that he would get drawn. So Gabriel, along with one other young man from the state of Tennessee, were chosen to be on Team Tennessee for the USA Games. Gabriel did very well there. He won, as you can see, one silver medal, two bronze, and then he got a fifth place ribbon, which is a great accomplishment for someone from our small little area that we have here. We're very proud of him.
Okay, Mr. Westfield is going to recognize some students.
Thank you. Ms. Bishop, if you'll bring your students up, please. Who we have in front of us tonight is the Cherokee High School FCC LA national team. We have, and I'm not sure which two we have with us, two aren't able to come, so we'll give them names here. We have Amber Burleson, is she with us tonight?
No.
Amber's a 10th grader. Neely Green, hi Neely.
Hi.
How are you?
Good.
Good, she's a 10th grader also. Hannah Jones, hi Hannah, you know what? Awesome, awesome. Hannah's a lone senior on the team. And Wendy Traviso, by process of elimination, is not with us tonight. So FCC LA stands for Family, Career, and Community Leaders of America. What our four girls did is they qualified for the national competition last March at the state level start, star event competition. Thanks to the support of the board, our director, Cherokee High School administration, all four of these girls that qualified were able to compete at the national competition this last summer in Atlanta. Even though it's the first year competing, any of the girls that competed, Amber, Neely, and Wendy received gold medals for the presentation on child abuse. Hannah Jones received a silver for her presentation on experienced teaching in a sixth grade classroom. Not only did they compete and receive medals, they were able to attend several leadership classes and network with students from all over the United States. None of this would be possible without support of the board and the approval to allow them to go and do that. Ms. Bishop, we appreciate you taking the time out of your summer to take the students to compete. Congratulations to all of you. Thanks.
Okay, the volunteer high school rifle team, we're gonna talk about some national championships here, so if the rifle team would come forward. And I understand your sponsor couldn't be here, is it?
Yes.
Volunteer rifle team came home from back-to-back competitions in Illinois and Ohio with two national team titles and three individual titles. The team started out their winning streak at the National Rifle Association Junior Standing National Air Rifle Championship, where the team, team captain Jayden Frazier, Jayden?
Oh, hi.
Team co-captain Nicole Carvagno?
Carvagno.
Carvagno, sorry. Matricea Wolf? And Hunter Brennan won first-place sporter team. Individuals also came out with titles. Captain Jayden Frazier earned first place overall, and Matricea Wolf earned second place overall, as well as co-captain Nicole Carvagno finishing fourth, and Hunter Brennan finishing in the top 10. Then the team went to Camp Perry, Ohio for the last two national matches against 46 of the top teams and 243 of the nation's best shooters. The top competition was the Junior Olympics, where the team finished out in fourth place with Jayden defending her title as number-one shooter in the nation with a personal best of 569, nine points away from the national record. And Nicole Carvagno coming out as the first-place shooter in her age group. The second competition was the CPN National Through Position Air Rifle Championships. The team finished in third place, earned $2,000, and Jayden Frazier finished in the top eight, I mean $500. Nicole Carvagno and Matricea Wolf shot their personal best, with Nicole finishing in ninth place overall, missing out the top eight four intervals. Congratulations, Volunteer High School.
so let's give Cassidy a hand as well. Appreciate it.
Okay, we've had some elections, we just want to say congratulations to Ms. Steady Shedd, Kathy Craddock, Holly Hilton, and Jennifer Hicks, on their way back on the board, supporting the board for the four years. Also, just for your information, the Hawkins County Fair is September 7th and 8th. That'll be posted at CPO, you might be able to leave about that, set up for a field trip type things for our students. And of course, our first day of school was August 5th and 8th. I think we started off pretty well. I've noticed that we have several of our bus drivers here, and I just want to recognize them because we've gotten kids to school, so if you are driving our buses, please stand up. We're still short buses, but you're looking at the people who are trying to fill in those gaps until we can get some more bus drivers.
Thank you.
And they've been commendable on their work, and I do appreciate it. So that's the end of our recognitions.
Thank you, Dr. Bailey. Let me say on behalf of the board, recognitions is the very best of the monthly board meetings we have. We just love seeing our outstanding students that do well. We hope that you continue to bring those to us so we can see them and also be able to show them how much we appreciate them. So that's a good thing, we really appreciate that. At this time, I'll recommend, I recognize any members of the Hawkins County Education Association. Seeing none. The Education Committee and the Hawkins County Commission, seeing none there, so we'll have no reports there. We'll go into reports under item number eight, and I'll recognize Jeremy Jones from the First Utility District, Churchill.
He won't be attending, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
And I would like to let the board know, I would say to Mr. Jeremy Jones to come and speak to this board and the community on water testing. As I got into a conversation with Mr. Jones at a softball game, our daughters play on the same softball team, and it is amazing the knowledge that man has about water quality throughout the state. He is the region representative to the state of Tennessee for all the utility districts in East Tennessee. When I was telling him about there's a new state law saying we're gonna have to start testing our water supplies at our schools, he said, yes, I'm familiar with that because the state had talked to him about it. Because he had mentioned that we had gotten together and tested some water a few years ago in our school. Now, my concern is this, I called Mr. Jones to let him know that he would be on the agenda, and he informed me that some people from central office had contacted him and told him not to come out of fear of what the reporters would do. I think that is very, very, for whatever reason, two gentlemen contacted him from central office, interfered with board operation, and the request of me asking a prominent citizen in my community to come and address this board, not only was he gonna give specifics of what's going on, what the importance of doing it, and maybe help us financially because there's gonna be a burden of expense with all this testing. And I am very, very disappointed that two members of our maintenance department would take it upon themselves, for whatever reason, by whomever instructed them to, to call this person and say, do not come to the meeting. I've got it taken care of. For whatever reason, I'm not privy to that, but the fact of the matter is, I feel very, very disrespected personally and for this board. We are seven members on this board. And when the administration takes it upon themselves to take action against this board, and that's the way I see it, I feel action needs to be taken against those two employees because I think it's unethical, I think it's very unprofessional, and it's a slap in the face to the function of this board, the Hawkins County Board of Education. I do not appreciate it, and I hope it never happens to any other board member. And I'm willing to hear excuses, the reasons why it was done. I requested this man to come and report. He didn't call in, but his knowledge in this area would have been beneficial to not only this board, but this school system. And I'm gonna repeat again, it's very offensive the way this happened. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Let me just say that when I saw that it was on the agenda, I myself contacted our maintenance director and asked him to contact Mr. Jones to see if in fact he was gonna be able to do our testing and if he was going to do it at no cost to our district. That's what I was very interested in, knowing that we were gonna have to test all the schools. Mr. Glass did contact him, I'm not aware that he told him not to come. I haven't spoke to Mr. Jones, so I don't know what the content of the conversation was. But our motive was to see if we could work together and see if he had something worked out because I know Mr. Glass had told us in our workshop that it was a matter he was working on simultaneously. We learned from the conversation that Mr. Glass had with Mr. Jones is that they use the same labs that we currently use now for water testing, and he pays the same rate that we will be paying for water testing too. So we would not have any advantages of doing that, so.
Well, my point, my point is this, you know.
Let me finish, now listen to you, let me finish my statement. The second part of that is, is that there are monies coming from the state. We don't know how much money will be coming down the pikes for individual school districts. This starts January the 1st, and we have one year to complete this. If it's my opinion, one opinion, that Mr. Glass is responsible, totally responsible for that, we should rely upon him to do that, we should not circumvent his supervision of maintenance. We should go to our director of schools if we have a request and make our requests through our directors of schools, which will make it down to the maintenance directors rather than, and I can appreciate the effort put in trying to get something worked out. And I know Mr. Jones personally, and yes, he is an expert in the area, but we're not there yet, and we've got a lot of work to do. But I didn't want to circumvent Mr. Glass, and that's why I asked him to find out what Mr. Jones was gonna propose in terms of testing our water, and is he gonna do it for us at no cost? Or is he gonna try to do something special for us? So I take personal responsibility for the request. I still think it's a good idea that Mr. Glass worked with our partners in the community. I had no problems with Mr. Jones coming and talking about water quality. I think we all have something to learn from that. I know he's constantly under water testing requirements through the state for lead contamination, but I felt like it was Mr. Glass's responsibility to do that, so I'll stop right there.
I think that's a very, very weak excuse for you taking it upon yourself to make the decision of what information comes to this board.
Did make any, did make.
No, he didn't, because he didn't show up. And someone as knowledgeable as that to bring information so we have a better understanding, for whatever reason, you denied that right.
No, I don't think anybody has told him not to come. I don't know if he told you that, but nobody's told him not to come.
That is incorrect, I never told him not to come.
Well, you can say what you want to, I know what the man told me, and the man is not here, is he?
Okay, we're gonna stop right there. So is there any other comments you wanna make on the water? If necessary, we can have Dr. Bailey to meet with Mr. Jones and Mr. Glass, and we can kinda get to the facts of that, and we can get it on. It seems like Mr. Christian has a different understanding of the facts, so let's, could you do that for us as to investigate what was said and whether he was telling not to come? My only request was that we talk to Mr. Jones and see if in fact he was gonna do a testing for us.
Couldn't I have been contacting?
I don't think you're the right person to do that as a board member.
I think it's out of our.
Well, I gave you that right.
Why can't?
I didn't do it, I asked, I asked her.
Why couldn't him contacted me and say, why do you want this man to come to me? Why didn't you instruct him to call me and say, why didn't I have him give a report?
I think that could be posted the exact same way because the facilities are my responsibility, which I'm directed by the director of.
I don't answer to you, Mr. White.
And I don't answer to you, I answer to Dr. Bailey.
I went to Dr. Bailey.
I was never notified that anything was gonna be said about the water at all.
Okay, let's proceed, this is probably not for that, but we'll try to get those answers for you and clarify that back off. So we'll. Dr. Bailey, updates, we say to commit approval?
You have a folder, FYI folder. And the first thing, the first thing that's in there, it was an executive approval, and I didn't do this correctly in July. This was supposed to be on the agenda, and it was in your FYI folder, but it was not on the agenda for approval when Mr. Martin said he could go through it forward, so we got it there this time. But it was just an agreement to let the Tennessee Department of Transportation park some vehicles on Hawkins Valley school property while they were doing some work on the roads up there. And we did allow them to do that, and they were off the property.
We are members, seven members on this Board. And when the administration takes it upon themselves to take action against this Board, and that's the way I see it, I feel action needs to be taken against those two employees because I think it's unethical, I think it's very unprofessional, and it's a slap in the face to the function of this Board, the Hawkins County Board of Education. I do not appreciate it, and I hope it never happens to any other Board member. And I'm willing to hear excuses, the reasons why it was done. I requested this man to come and report. He didn't call in, but his knowledge in this area would have been beneficial to not only this Board, but this school system. And I'm gonna repeat again, it's very offensive the way this happened. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Let me just say that when I saw that it was on the agenda, I myself contacted our maintenance director and asked him to contact Mr. Jones to see if in fact he was gonna be able to do our testing and if he was going to do it at no cost to our district. That's what I was very interested in, knowing that we were gonna have to test all the schools. Mr. Glass did contact him. I'm not aware that he told him not to come. I haven't spoke to Mr. Jones, so I don't know what the content of the conversation was. But our motive was to see if we could work together and see if he had something worked out. Because I know Mr. Glass had told us in our workshop that it's a matter he was working on simultaneously. We learned from the conversation that Mr. Glass had with Mr. Jones is that they use the same labs that we currently use now for water testing, and he pays the same rate that we will be paying for water testing too. So we would not have any advantages of doing that, so...
Well, my point is this, you know...
Now, listen to you. Let me finish my statement. The second part of that is, is that there are monies coming from the state. We don't know how much money will be coming down the pikes for individual school districts. This starts January the first, and we have one year to complete this. If it's my opinion, one opinion, that Mr. Glass is responsible, totally responsible for that, we should rely upon him to do that. We should not circumvent his supervision of maintenance. We should go to our Director of Schools if we have a request and make our requests through our Directors of Schools, which will make it down to the maintenance directors rather than... And I can appreciate the effort put in trying to get something worked out. And I know Mr. Jones personally, and yes, he is an expert in the area, but we're not there yet, and we've got a lot of work to do. But I didn't want to circumvent Mr. Glass, and that's why I asked him to find out what Mr. Jones was gonna propose in terms of testing our water, and is he gonna do it for us at no cost, or is he gonna try to do something special for us? So I'd say personal responsibility for the request. I still think it's a good idea that Mr. Glass worked with our partners in the community. I had no problems with Mr. Jones coming and talking about water quality. I think we all have something to learn from that. I know he's constantly under water testing requirements through the state for lead contamination, but I felt like it was Mr. Glass's responsibility to do that. So I'll stop right there.
I think that's a very, very weak excuse for you taking it upon yourself to make the decision of what information comes to this Board.
Did he make any... Did he make...
No, he didn't, 'cause he didn't show up. And someone as knowledgeable as that to bring information so we have a better understanding, for whatever reason, you denied that right.
No, I don't think anybody has told him not to come. I don't know if he told you that, but nobody's told him not to come.
That is incorrect. I never told him not to come.
Well, you can say what you want to. I know what the man told me, and the man is not here, is he?
Okay. We're gonna stop right there. So is there any other comments you wanna make on the water? If necessary, we can have Dr. Bailey to meet with Mr. Jones and Mr. Glass, and we can kinda get to the facts of that, and we can get it all. It seems like Mr. Christian has a different understanding of the facts. So let's, could you do that for us, is to investigate what was said and whether he told not to come? My only request was that we talk to Mr. Jones and see if in fact he was gonna do our testing for us.
Couldn't I have been contacting?
I don't think you're the right person to do that as a Board member.
Well, I gave you that right.
What kid...
I didn't do it. I asked her...
Why couldn't him contacted me and say, "Why do you want this man to come to me?" Why didn't you instruct him to call me and say, "Why didn't I have him to give a report?"
I think that could be posted the exact same way, because the facilities are my responsibility, which I'm directed by the Director of School.
I don't answer to you, Mr. Glass.
And I don't answer to you. I answer to Dr. Bailey.
I went to Dr. Bailey.
I was never notified that anything was gonna be said about the water, at all.
Okay. Let's proceed. This is probably not for that. We'll try to get those answers for you and clarify that back off. Dr. Bailey, updates? We take your committee approval?
You have a folder, FYI folder. And the first thing, the first thing that's in there, it was an executive approval, and I didn't do this correctly in July. This was supposed to be on the agenda, and it was in your FYI folder, but it was not on the agenda for approval, when Mr. Martin said he could go through it forward. So we got it there this time. But it was just an agreement to let the Tennessee Department of Transportation park some vehicles on Hawkins Valley school property while they were doing some work on the roads up there. And we did allow them to do that, and they were off the property before school started. So it is on the agenda. It's not for approval, but that has executive approval. The next part of your information, there were some bids that went out for food service. The bids were opened yesterday, and it's number nine in your packet. You'll see that in your packet, number nine. There were four bids submitted, and all four bids are in your packet. Ms. Brennan would like to, for the Board, to accept the first bid that's listed there. That's the lowest, the lowest and best bid that she had for this equipment, from Tri-Mark to T-Date Equipment. And in your packet, it is written to accept the lowest, the best and lowest bidder, and then it is written to ask him for approval of the purchase, so we could go ahead and get that purchase for the cafeteria. And then... Okay, there is a, there is a policy on corporal punishment, on the new policies, but I was gonna request, it's on the consent agenda, and I was gonna request on the consent agenda, number one, under number seven, policy 6.314 of corporal punishment. You all didn't get the correct, you all didn't get all of the information on that, so I would like to request to pull that until you had an opportunity to look at that.
Is this the part that we didn't get?
Yes. Yes, there were two options, and you only got one.
Anything else on the reports?
Under the consent agenda, there was also a question about the wording for policy 4.603 on the promotion and retention of students in grade K through eight, and had to do with parents being nullified within fifteen days, nine weeks. I actually would like to pull that one and work on that wording, because when I read it, it's unclear, and we try to like, we would like to try to make that clearer before it went through on your approval.
Anything else on the reports?
That was the next one, Dr. Bailey, 6.313.
Yep. Pull number two, policy 4.603 on the promotion and retention of students in grades K-8, and pull policy 6.314 on corporal punishment.
That concludes our reports. At this time, we'll move into the acceptance and approval of the consent agenda. We already got the two recommendations, that number two and seven be pulled. Do I hear any motions that we approve, or that we remove any of these other items in consent agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I also would like to pull 6.309.
Can you guess the number six?
Number six, and number eight, and number nine. They need work.
Any other, any other items on the consent agenda that members would like to see pulled before we vote? Hearing none. Do I have a motion to be approved consent agenda? B1, minus items number two, six, seven, eight, and nine. Thank you, Ms. Charles. Second, Ms. Shannon. Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Mr. Chairman, I have, I have, I have some discussion. This, this executive approval on this parking of that equipment, I know it's past its history, but the first time I ever saw that was now.
We sent them an email.
Well, I don't, my computer, my wife, we made the paper. My wife let a hacker in my computer.
Oh, okay.
And I don't have no other means of getting... Ms. Bailey and I have been trying to communicate, and she's not even been able to get emails to me. And I even got me a fancy phone, and I'm not good at it yet either.
And I also think that was in our FYI packet for last month's meeting.
It could have been, but I'll be honest with you, FYI, I don't mean a lot to me. But anyway, my point is this. This is the point I wanna mention. If I understand it correctly, executive approvals are only supposed to be made on issues that the Board have approved for executive approval. Now, we need to go back and look and see. I don't think you can just up and do executive approvals on anything you want to. I think, I think that there is direction on that. The Chairman of the Board is on the Executive Committee, but I believe if we take a look at that, we're gonna find that it takes Board approval to allow executive, executive decisions to be made. Because if you make a decision on something like this, and I'm not aware of it, it's kinda, it's kinda aggravating. I mean, it's fine, I guess. It worked out okay. I don't see a problem with it. But the thing about it is, we're the least informed bunch of people I ever seen in this whole system. Well, if you don't, you never do. You never do, because you're there all the time. I don't go down there all the time. No, I'm not talking...
Oh, okay.
I'm not talking, you're talking.
Go down where?
To the, to the central office.
I'm not down there all the time.
Oh, you're not?
Not all the time.
Okay. Well, I've probably been down there in four years about three or four times. But the point is, I think we need to do some investigations to see what the authoritative process is on doing executive decisions. Listen, there's only seven of us. And I mean, every one of us have a cellphone. I mean, you know, what's, what's the, what's the problem with letting us know? And you know good and well, I'm not the technologically most advanced person in the world with giving me a call and letting me know what's going on. If, 'cause I don't get all that stuff.
We, we're sent text messages as a group. I know Dr. Bailey sends us text messages.
She does, but I've not been getting them.
Did we get a text message on this last executive approval?
One of the things, I don't know how we would get it. I know when Mr. Christian was Chair, he approved a number of trips for athletic advancement. We just didn't have time to pull everybody.
Well, in that case, in that case, nothing needs to be done.
Well, in order to dismiss a student, you have to have Board approval, don't you, to be able to do that?
On the overnight field trips.
Just, just necessarily go to primary games and...
Oh, but yeah.
Yeah, policy states that if a student leaves school early for game...
Like for the games, yes.
Or an extracurricular activity, my correctness, Mr. Smith?
Sure.
And a coach forgets to do that, or it comes up unexpectedly in the class. That's...
I understand that. I don't have a problem with that. I have a problem with that because somebody dropped the ball by not getting that to us in a timely manner. I don't care if it did. I mean...
I heard it last spring, though.
We... But that, we're talking about a different thing now.
If I may, not necessarily, Mr. Hicks. In the spring with the weather, we may have approval to leave early for a baseball game that was done well in advance, and the Board approved it. The game gets rained out and gets rescheduled the next day. There's no way to anticipate that might happen, so it's not necessarily someone dropping the ball.
Well, that may be... And I know in here, that in this packet tonight, there's approvals for stuff to happen in 2019. But by the same token, we're not talking about contacting the whole Congress and sending it to the United States of America. There's only seven of us.
Mr. Chairman, if you would like for me to read my emails, I'm in town, Mr. Hicks. I would agree to do that.
No, I don't need you, I don't need that. I don't need that. What I need is, I need, I need you to understand where I'm coming from on anything that we do, as far as not knowing what's going on is my problem. I don't know what's going on in some of these cases.
Ms. Smith, are you looking at the policy on executive approval?
Yes, sir.
Can you read that to us, please?
Sure.
Can we pull it up? Would you like me to pull it up?
Do you want it read to you or not?
No, no, I'm kinda thinking, I gotta back see it. We can't pull up State Law on our website, can we, under that site there?
It's a little tricky.
Mr. Phil, you know that off the top of your head, don't you?
I haven't looked very lately.
What is?
TCA forty-nine dash two dash two oh six. That's the only one referenced, to my best. Generally, you got three up there. I wanna see a one. There's three, isn't there? Three. Is that a committee? Okay.
It's, this is what the law says.
Wait, which law do you agree?
This is forty-nine dash two oh six, Executive Committee Powers and Duties.
Same thing up there.
Huh?
I believe, was that there, same thing.
It very well be.
Mr. Phil, do you have an opinion about our practice, and does number eight, does that cover us until we're together as a board on these matters?
Well, that's what the statute says. Verbatim. Forty-nine two oh six, so it's certainly, statute will authorize it if you put it in there.
Can you see if...
Please, can you show us number two and three?
See it.
The numbers.
Yes, please.
Forty-nine two, two oh five, number three.
Two oh five, is there any conflict with that?
Forty-nine two, two oh five?
That's a duty to the Chair.
That's a Chair.
Forty-nine two, two oh three?
It says under two oh five, it says, "Can sign all warrants authorized by the Board of Education and issued by the Director of School for all the administrative decisions."
I'm not gonna say it anymore.
That whole section, that whole section is the duties and powers of both.
I, I know, I kinda took my lead from Mr. Christian and Mr. Collier. They did things that were needing to be done, kind of a semi-emergency that we didn't have time to pull together, and then they were approved at the next Board meeting. I kinda followed their lead on that. It seemed to work out well. With the parking on Carter's Valley, we knew that they're paving Carter's Valley, and you know, and we knew they were gonna be off our property before school started, so I think Dr. Bailey and I talked about that, so as long as they're not impeding our, our school, then we would try that and get it approved at our next Board meeting, and it got, it got over.
It was in the FYI packet, not on the...
Shouldn't have been approved.
It should have been on the agenda, and that's my responsibility.
Yeah, and I think that's just part of the learning curve for a new Director, so new Director, so we'll try to forgive you for that.
Yes. Thank you.
If, if we're in the discussion phase of passing consent agenda, if that needs to work, then certainly...
If that, let me say this. If that's the consensus of the way that the Board wants to operate, I will not stand in the way. But, you know, I would just like to make sure, you know, that I know what's going on, 'cause I sit down and read every page of this every time I get one of them. And when I saw that, I thought, "Well, what the heck is that?" I know, but I, like I said, I don't normally go home and read this, 'cause most of this stuff is thrown at us right at, you know, off the bat. So, you know, I mean, you got what, you get it, if you get it five days or whatever before the meeting, doesn't give you a whole lot of time to go through all of it. But anyway, that, I, I mean, you know, if that's what everybody wants to do as far as executive approvals are concerned, I won't be the stick and the spoke. I'll, I'll go along if everybody...
Is everybody good with that? And I pledge for my next month, and I'll be out of here, but that I'll not make any rash decisions and it'll be in the best interest of getting for you guys. But it'll be matters like this, early dismissals, things that have a timeline put to it, and anything of great nature or involves money or decision-making, we'll not, we'll not do that. We don't want to do that.
I did run the information through Mr. Phillips, because the state of Tennessee has citizens that can't sign, and I wasn't gonna sign that, so I didn't want, you know, being new, I didn't want to go into the Board in jeopardy, so...
Okay, any further discussion on the consent agenda? Yes, ma'am.
Number one, pulling those five policies through number fourteen, correct?
Yes. We're voting on everything else that's just approved, okay? We have a, we have a motion and a second, don't we?
Yes.
Call, real quick.
Charles?
Yes.
Helen?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Christian?
Yes.
Pigs?
Yes.
Lauren?
Yes. Going back to, Dr. Bailey has told us that she wants to work submit number two and clean the language up on that to make it easier to understand. Number six, we haven't had enough time to study this additional piece of information on corporal punishment, so I assume everybody would want to table that till we can study that further. I'm sorry.
Mr. Chairman, we're just gonna have to table two, six, seven, eight, and nine. Just table those.
Table all those?
Yes.
How are, how are we gonna work on those? Do you wanna do that?
We'll just bring them back next month.
So that everybody work on that, themselves individually, come up with recommendations?
Yes.
We don't need to have a workshop to work on that and something else. Is that your motion? To table one?
Yes.
Bring back. I'll say it. We have a motion and a second to table these items. That would be two, six, seven, eight, and nine. Bring it back next month for consideration.
I understand what we're, you know, I pulled two and seven, and I know what we need to work on on that and get the right information. The other policies, we did, I had people read those, so I guess I would leave maybe to see where the questions were before we could make any recommendations.
Sure.
Or are you saying the Board will work on those and bring the recommendations back?
At this time, Mr. Hicks has raised the question, so if he's got those questions, I assume he'll bring those to you for further clarification and ask you to change those and, or recommend, and then we'll consider it as a, as a change. So... All right. Does that answer any questions, Ms. Michael? Okay, you gonna call, real?
Done, dear. Oh, the title, excuse me.
Your motion is your to table?
Helen?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Christian?
Yes.
Pigs?
Yes.
Lauren?
Yes. An oversight on mine is that Ms. Craddock is not with us. We have six Board members here for the record tonight. She is not present, so we do have six Board members. Let me just say that for the record, until we get to the very beginning. Moving on through our agenda tonight. Approval of purchases, C, is that what we ran?
Yes.
Okay, item number C on your agenda is approval of purchases over five thousand dollars. There are six items on there. We can do that collectively, or we can do that individually. It's your choice.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to clarify.
Oh, boy.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we approve all purchases over five thousand dollars.
I say.
Motion's been made. Would you approve approval of what purchases over five thousand, C, one through six? Been seconded by Mr. Hicks. Any discussion? Call world, please.
Charles.
Yes.
Hilton.
Yes.
Shannon.
Yes.
Christian.
Yes.
Hicks.
Yes.
Lauren.
Yes. Things to unfinished business, I, unless I have it here in front of me, I'm not aware of any unfinished business, Dr. Bailey?
Um.
Is that a smoke of passion or is it just?
Yeah, it's, it's bad.
I thought that was just a room here at one.
Yes.
If you have unfinished, do you have any unfinished business?
I'm not, not that unaware.
Okay, all right, let's move into new business. I recognize Mr. Christian, I think he has a, uh, what, a proposal maybe for us and information?
It's gonna be at the Board's discretion. I was contacted by a gentleman in my district and he was sharing with me that some of the after-school daycare centers are not gonna be able to provide transportation or accept after-school students as of December twenty-first because of new DOT regulations and licensing issues through the DOT, Department of Transportation. What he suggested to me, and he had contacted the YMCA of Kingsport, and they are willing to perform an after-school program at Churchill Elementary School. I've spoken to the principal at Churchill Elementary and she says she is in favor of this. And that she does have space after school, either in the cafeteria or the gymnasium. Now with YMCA, they are a nonprofit entity, this does not violate any of our policies. This will be at no cost to the school system. Because YMCA will bill the parents or guardians of the students that participate. And he had sent me a, a fee sheet, and I, I guess I can say this publicly. Uh, the weekly cost for the after-school program is fifty-nine dollars and a daily cost is sixteen dollars. And if you do a direct deposit or a direct withdrawal, it's cheaper. But I don't know the hours of operation. I tried to contact, uh, the representative from YMCA, but I didn't get an answer. Uh, but in order to move forward with this, YMCA is willing to bring information to the school and the school hand that out to the parents to see who all is interested. And in order to do an after-school program in our schools, they would have to, Ms. Bailey, could you talk to the gentleman, to Ms. Hope?
The slope. Did you talk?
Okay, I, I wasn't sure if he contacted twenty-two. I, I was hoping he did. Um, but they have to get a license to use our school. And it would take up to December to get that license approved. It, in essence, it's just like a, uh, a rec league or any athletic team using one of our bathrooms. Or an organization using our school facilities.
Using their curriculum or what curriculum would they use?
I'm not sure. This just came up late this afternoon and I wanted to put it before the Board. But in order to move forward, uh, I can get more information back to this Bailey.
I think you, you know, want to know if they provide insurance and if they're responsible for any damages to the facility.
It would be, the way I envision it.
Background checks, which I'm probably, YMCA does that.
Yes.
Probably have to.
It would have to go in line with our facility use agreement that any, any entity would have to fill out and be approved. And, and state law, and I had that on my desk and I apologize, I left it, then through it again, and state law does say that a school system can rent out or let organizations such as daycare centers and after-school programs use our facilities as long as it doesn't interfere with the teaching process, and this would not.
There's definitely a need there for it at every school for after-school for his parents working at five o'clock, no doubt about that. How would be the best way to do that? To let her pull together the people, the right people, get together YMCA, try to brainstorm and bring something back to us?
And I can give you the lady's name and phone number, let you contact her, uh, yes.
Could you, uh, I'll say in your motion, if you wanna make a motion to ask, uh, Dr. Bailey to do that and to explore that, bring something back to us, we're kinda on a tight timeline, sounds like December.
Yes, that would be my motion to, uh.
Exploratory committee and put this, kind of set something together?
Yeah.
Everybody understand Mr. Christian's motion and especially Dr. Bailey to kinda, just wanna share the person at YMCA, who and, uh, just gather some key players and just bring it back to us for consideration? Any further discussion on that, uh, issue? It's a great concept if we can afford it and, and everything I believe and it's good.
I like, you know, if you think about the eastern Harrah County, we, um, you know, Rogers was fortunate enough to have a boys' and girls' club. We, we don't have any. But that's my motion.
Okay, all right, I'll now say it then. If you would please go on the roll, Ms. Michael.
Charles.
Yes.
Hilton.
Yes.
Shannon.
Yes.
Christian.
Yes.
Hicks.
Yes.
Lauren.
Yes. Okay, um, under new business, that's all I have from Mr. Christian, uh, I'll go to Dr. Bailey. I, I spoke briefly with our, uh, uh, counsel before the meeting and there's been the developments of today. And, um, if there's any kind of legal questions, we would probably need to go in a closed session if you wanna ask a particular question. He's not the attorney of record, but he's, he is an attorney and he has to give us counsel. But if you wanted to ask particulars, we probably need to go in closed session, but, uh, I think she has a report for us. And, um, let me just ask, any board member, do you wish to go into closed session to ask Mr. Phillips a legal question? Period nine, I'll turn it over to Dr. Bailey.
Okay, um. There was, there was a court case, um, and let me say before I start with the report, this is unofficial information. This is information that I got over the phone today, uh, so I don't have anything official, uh, from the.
The source of your information is?
Yes. The source of the information is, um.
Tennessee.
Tennessee Risk Management, Deborah Coy is who I talked to. And, um, they were working with us in a court case, uh, Loretta Pugh versus Hopkins County Board of Education. And, uh, that verdict came in this morning, uh, and the verdict came in, uh, Mr. Pugh bid prevail. And she was awarded, uh, fifty-six thousand eight hundred thirty dollars and ninety-seven cents in back wages and benefits and as well as forty thousand dollars in damages. Um, according to information that, um, from Mr. Pugh, uh, I'm sorry, from Ms. Coy. Hopkins County Board of Education is responsible for payment of the lost wages and benefits and Risk Management is responsible for the forty thousand dollars in damage and attorney fees. However, yesterday morning, um. Ms. Pugh was, um, offered to settle the case yesterday morning for seventy-eight thousand dollars. And the representative from Tennessee Risk Management turned down that offer without consulting, uh, the Board of Education to see if, if they would want to accept that offer. She made the decision on her own. So based on that, uh, Tennessee Risk Management is willing to pay twenty-one thousand dollars toward the lost wages and benefits, which would reduce the cost for the Hopkins County Board of Education to thirty-five thousand eight hundred thirty, um, eight hundred thirty dollars in benefits.
Any questions, uh, Dr. Bailey? We'll reserve that until we get the, um, judgment from the court in writing and, uh, we'll be voting on the expenditure at a later date. Uh, and, uh, Tennessee Risk Management decided they want to appeal the verdict of the jury and, uh, so we'll, we'll wait for further information on that.
Mr. Chairman, I do have one question.
Okay.
I'm running now, and I'm not, I'm speaking for myself, not individual members. I was not notified of this.
I got an email. We did get an email. And if they want some email.
An email on, can you forward me that?
I'm, I'm, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
This case is probably two years old now. Approaching.
Yes, yes, two thousand fifteen. The dismissal was on the twentieth of January, two thousand fifteen.
Said it's over.
So it's.
Yeah, it's three years, three years.
Three and a half. Yeah, so, yeah. It's been a long time there. Uh, the court had sent it to mediation and I think mediation went on for a year, back and forth, and it wasn't settled, and then a trial they had set off.
I'm really not aware.
You shouldn't give a report for a legal representative of Tennessee Risk Management, give a report of trial and his opinion regarding field and all that, I would think.
Okay.
I'd leave all of it for season.
Would you get that report during the course of everything or after trial time?
Well, he shouldn't do it right away, so he's got something to report. I mean, and, and of course, you've got only so many days if you do initiate a field and start it, once the judge is entered. Now, that's not the same as the verdict being entered, judge may not be entered for another week or two.
Okay.
As, as a board member, the only thing that you would want, I think the only thing you'd want to consider is whether or not this board wants to appeal this to the court, Tennessee Court of Appeals.
And you certainly want to hear what the attorney would have to say about it.
We would wanna hear from the trial lawyer as to what he recommends and what he thinks about that, so. That's, if, if it's your pleasure, we could ask that person to appear, would we go in closed session since that's your litigation? Would that be your honest request that we ask him to appear at some point, we can do a special?
I suspect he'll submit a written report and I'll put that in that space.
You wanna see the report before we?
We'll see what the report says.
Mr. Christian, does he see the report first? Is everybody? First, you good?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, okay. All right, it seems to be the consensus that we'll wait for the report and the coffee of the written verdict of the court. And, uh, we'll decide what course of action to take from that point. I think the key is thirty days is the appeal time. And that's counted.
When the judgment is entered, that's the verdict.
That's counted days as well, right?
Could be week two, three, whatever.
Yeah, all right, so hopefully we'll get something soon. Any questions or discussion on that matter? Ms. Michael's looking at me like she's got a question. No?
Just say what you signed it.
She's waiting. Well, I don't have too much more. Is there anything else under new business?
Mr. Chairman, I, I do have something that I wanna present under new business. And I know y'all are getting sick and tired of this, but I'm gonna continue to do it anyway. And, and, and this whole, this whole thing stems, this is my motion, I, I done it in writing, so that way, well, actually in typing, and you notice it's very small, so I had to do it off of that fancy fountain I've got. And I'm not real smart, but anyway, what my motion consists of, and you can read it for yourself, is the same thing with deferred policy from month to month, give us time to look at it. Cause, uh, as, as just a, a point of information, um. For the Board and even these people here, I sat through every bit of this trial. And here, eighty percent of the evidence that was presented was policy. And that really got to me because, um, we've got a lot of work to do on policy. And it was basically, uh, I would give you this one comment, and you know, I've been kind of a stickler about, uh, the, uh. The policy manual and it being continually updated and everything, so we had had that. One of the, one of the witnesses testified that that was what they referred to, who was an employee of the system. That was what they referred to, was that hardback manual for policy. And I'm not so sure, and I, I don't have pictures of that, but I'm not so sure if some of the policy that they presented was even up to date. But besides, besides that, that was the policy that was presented and that was what was heard and that was what the decision was made on. So my motion is, is that any, that I move that we, that all, uh, proposed policy review being presented, uh, at any monthly board meeting be deferred to the next monthly board meeting for first reading to give ample time for review.
I'll say it in the motion. Any discussion?
I have a question. Do we have a schedule of when these, uh, printed lists that we have available?
Yes, you wanna, you wanna describe that? Timeline.
Yeah, you, are you asking if there is a, a list of them, of when these policies are supposed to be reviewed? Well, yes, there is. If you look on the left-hand side of the policy, it says review annually in June.
Okay, but one sheet of paper is what I'm asking. Is it somewhere in one sheet or one list? Or we have availability, the availability to look at it before you were gonna do it?
I believe it, I believe it's in the PTSBA training manual.
There is a list of policies?
I believe there is, I, Jack, I, and I will look and see if it's in there, but I think I have seen.
Because I thought it would induce it to be unable to get this to move, process to move quicker if there was, uh, time frame, but time sheet is what I'm asking.
And I'll have to look because I think it's in this, in this training manual. Cause I have seen it before and it's a suggestion, uh, policy review.
Typically, typically, what we're waiting to ask to do, when we get a whole section to approve, to approve the whole board. Uh, what Mr. Charles had asked us to do, we're assigned to read those policies. So we read those and if there are new recommendations from TSDA, he gave us those updates and we would update them either according to law or according to public chapter that was coming through. And I believe, I can't exactly remember, I don't know, somebody back there can help me. Um, we would stop, we would do one section one month and then you would see the next section the next month. Um. You have gotten some updated information from the, with, with the policies that were on there tonight that came down from TSDA after the legislative session. That had, that had with chapters that were going to impact the policy, so those have to be agreed upon. It's, if I'm understanding Mr. Hicks correctly, he would like to have a copy of that. If, if we're going to, if we're going to, um, oh, please, if you are going to approve an entire section, he would like to have been notified if that's going to happen.
Thirty days.
The following month.
Okay.
Point of order, Mr. Chairman. Do we have a second for the motion?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, I just couldn't remember.
Yes. Um, I, I, I think we have broke this down, uh, under policy one and we had it in a certain month, we were doing that one, then we hit two and just going down that list. And I think that's Ms. Charles's question. That's not locked in or anything like that because as law changes, we're having to constantly update, right?
Right, that we do read yearly.
Yes, so, and I think Ms. Hicks is right too on the, on the margin there, it's got a review date.
Right, I know that.
Subject to review every, every year.
That's just to expedite.
Yep.
The meeting, if we have lower than this.
The motion is, is that the Board had this information thirty days in advance for us to review and approve or reject, so that's the motion and that's my second. Any further questions? Here again, oh, world, please.
So, yes, it's to defer?
Yes.
No?
Would be not to, is per his motion. Makes it easy to write them out, Mr. Hicks.
Charles.
Yes.
Hilton.
Yes.
Shannon.
Yes.
Christian.
Yes.
Hicks.
Yes.
Lauren.
Yes. Any other new business? Period nine, now your motion will adjourn.
Whoa, 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 you got a question?
Hand up inside?
You got a question? Yes, you got it, she got it up there.
Our next board meeting is September the sixth. And Mr. Pauls has a conflict, he cannot be here. To present the names from the search.
He said he was available on September the thirteenth, is that correct, for us to do a special call meeting? I would, I would move that we call a special board meeting for the purpose of looking at, uh, his slate of finalists on September the thirteenth. I'll leave the time open for those that are working to try to accommodate their schedules. Uh, but that's the date he could be here and, uh.
Special call?
Special call meeting. And the only thing we can count on that is a great search.
That's the only thing on the agenda, which is to receive the names, just to take no action. That's the only thing on the agenda, is to receive the names, is to take no action.
Exactly. Questions?
To him, to him, yeah.
Is that, is that a thing, our regular board meeting will happen on a regular day, okay, on the sixth or whatever it is, and then this is, okay, I, I just want to be clear.
Mr. Chairman, is he okay with the rest of the board, it's six o'clock, and that's what we talked about, people are busy, so.
That is good for Mr. Qualls, if that is good for you, uh, that's the general consensus, we'll set this for September thirteenth at six o'clock, you put that on your calendar, no candidates will be here, uh, it will just be question and answers.
How many applicants do we have?
We have, uh, we have eighteen people that are, uh, interested in this position, and, um, it's a good number, really, and, uh, it looks like it's a very good candidate, too. So, um, I'm anxious, I know Dr. Bailey's very anxious, and her staff is anxious, I want to say thank you, Dr. Bailey, and, you know, she's, she's really working hard.
Absolutely. I love you.
She recognized the bus drivers, I do appreciate the bus drivers, and trying to make up, if you have bus driver friends, let's get them out there, we'd like to fill these routes as soon as possible, but thank you for the extra work.
Before we adjourn, do we need to, uh, do we need to send anything on our transportation committee?
Um, I was working with Mr. Benavides today, I would like to get some more information from him, and then they could come back in the committee to see.
Okay, yeah, I didn't know if we needed to go ahead and set a time for the committee to meet or, or look at, but that's fine, as long as, as long as we've got, you know, as long as we've got ample time to make notes, I'm, I'm good, but. Yeah, we've come, we do need to address some other issues.
Yes.
Before this committee is dissolved.
Any other business?
Move to adjourn. Come on, hold on, man. I wish I could, I wish I could.